This is a City of Granberry City Council special meeting. It's 11:30 a.m. Monday, April 29th, 2024. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granberry, Texas, 76048. And I will remind everyone that you can watch this meeting live at www.granberry.org/live. So we've been called to order. I'm going to ask if our city manager, Mr. Chris Kaufman, would lead us in an invocation, and then the council and mayor will lead the pledge allegiance.
My witness, if you would. Lord, we just come to you today thanking you for the opportunity to serve our community. Just pray for wisdom and guidance as decisions are contemplated and made here today. Thank you for the opportunity to look at ways to make things better for our community and at the same time be careful with the decisions we make. Just, Lord, just watch over protect those that are traveling, and we miss our two that aren't here with us today. And I just pray for special blessings as they travel and enjoy their time as family. And, Lord, just thank you again for the opportunity to serve our great community, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
We have an opportunity here for public comments on agenda items, for non-public hearing agenda items. Ms. Walker, do we have anyone who's signed up? No one's signed up. We also have the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine, previously discussed, will be approved with one motion. But if any of the city council would like to discuss an item, we can take it off and discuss it. Any discussion on this item? There's no discussion on this item. I would like to hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Oberdehr, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That will be approved four and oh. Go to the deliberation agenda. It's the presentation by the Enterprise Fleet Management, and we will have a discussion and provide direction to staff from city council regarding the city's fleet management program. Mr. Kaufman, do you want to bring us up to date, please?
Sure. If could, ask Deputy City Manager Michael Ross to introduce our presenter and give a little background of how we got to where we are today before we let her take us down the path of what she's got to show us.
You bet. This kind of began, Chris and I are members of a city management study group for about 20, 25 years now. And Jennifer, it was one of the managers' turn. We rotate bringing speakers, and Jennifer was brought by City of Angleton, is what she just reminded me of, to speak to our group about this method of fleet management that Enterprise offers. It was intriguing to us. Chris said, let's take a look at it. And so we've been doing that for a month or so, maybe two now, with Jennifer just going through, looking at all the potential scenarios and options and mapping out our fleet in great detail, right sizing our fleet, which was a good part of this exercise no matter what. And Jennifer is the senior account executive, Jennifer Bertram, with Enterprise Fleet Management. And I'd like to introduce her, unless you want to give any more detail, Chris, just introduce Jennifer to show us what she's prepared.
Thank you, Michael. Come on board, Jennifer. I might just say that we're talking about vehicles that are one-ton capacity and below her, and below. So this isn't our heavy-duty equipment. This is our main fleet.
Exactly. Mayor, council, thank you for your time today. I'm really looking forward to walking you through the conversations we've had so far and some of the analysis that we've done. Essentially, what we're going to start with is an operational overview. Obviously, you may know Enterprise, but what does Enterprise have to do with fleet management and specifically with government fleet? So I'll walk you through essentially the opportunity and some of the efficiencies essentially we can create. And then we're going to dive into an analysis that we've done, looking at what the city is currently doing today and what we're proposing going forward. We're going to talk a little bit about each of these areas today. So you notice that right there in the middle, Enterprise Rent-A-Car is our parent company. The significance there is that we own and operate the largest fleet in the world, which is really incredible considering that we started with seven Cadillacs more than 60 years ago, and we've grown organically. We're still a privately-held company. We're still a family-owned business, which a lot of folks don't know, still owned by the Taylor family. And essentially, we're sharing a blueprint today that, one, we work with more than 100 different cities in Texas alone, but a blueprint that Enterprise has been running for more than 60 years and how cost-effective it is to look at the fleet from this perspective. And so we'll talk a little bit about acquisition. The most important thing to note there, I just want to, you know, get it out on the table right away, is that your buying power as a government entity stays the same, whether we're purchasing through buy board, through the state contract, or whether Enterprise is helping you acquire a vehicle directly from the factory or through one of those avenues. The buying power is all based on end user. So none of that's going to change. So that's the great part. You guys have that government buying power that we'll be able to leverage. We'll talk a little bit about aftermarket, some of the outfit, the logistics, depending on the department, some of the administrative burden we can reduce there. We'll talk about cash flow, how the city is replacing vehicles today based on capital budget, some opportunity we have to stretch that capital further and replace vehicles more frequently. We'll talk about operating costs. So what does the, you know, maintenance and fuel, for example, look like over its life? You know, how would we anticipate for those costs to shift if we're replacing vehicles on a quote 13-year lifecycle versus we were replacing a little bit sooner? What should we anticipate going forward? And we're going to talk a lot about resale today. Resale is the most important component in the total cost of ownership, which it, most cities are doing a pretty good job in getting their bids on the back end, making sure that they're selling the vehicles for the highest value. But it makes a huge difference when we're selling vehicles at the right time to that total cost of ownership. And it is the one component that is going to allow for the city to replace vehicles more frequently within that same capital budget. Here's some of the folks that we're working with today you may know. These are just some of the ones that are a little bit more local. As I mentioned, we're working with more than 100 different cities in Texas. Some of these folks you may know here. There's quite a few. We have grown organically, and really in Texas, when we had our RFP approved maybe 10 years ago through the TIPS Cooperative, and we're also a part of Sourcewell from a due diligence standpoint, that's really when things started to take off. As you can imagine, before that, we were doing, you know, an RFP one city at a time, which can take a really long time. So having those cooperatives and our RFP approved has really helped us grow organically and through referral, just like we were introduced to Granberry. So what's interesting about these cities is they're all really different. They all have different philosophies when we first met with them on when to replace assets. They all had different budgets. Some had something built into the general fund. Some had an entire VERF, you know, that had, you know, an internal replacement fund already established, and others had, you know, nothing built in. It was, okay, here's what we've got this year. Here's what we're going to get to replace. But every single city that we work with, regardless, is trying to figure out how to do more with less. How do we cut back? How do we cut costs? How do we, you know, leverage, you know, making the best decisions with the money that we have? And it's interesting, this came straight from the Texas State page, the screenshot right there on the right-hand side, that cities, counties, universities, and school districts in Texas, on average, run their vehicles for about nine years or longer. And usually, it's because for some of the applications, maybe a Parks truck or Public Works, they're doing fairly low mileage. And so the thought process is, okay, well, let's run the asset as long as we can, right? We want to get our money's worth out of it, right? Where emergency response, generally, we see do a little bit more mileage. They're driven differently, a little harder, just due to the nature of, you know, how they're used. And so those usually get replaced a little bit more frequently. And we do see, again, from a commonality standpoint, that multiple departments have multiple budgets and plans. So maybe PD has X amount built in because we need to replace those vehicles more frequently, where the code enforcement truck, it's a hand-me-down from Public Works, right? They don't get anything built into their budget. And again, that's really common. But we see it's because the capital budget is actually dictating the replacement schedule. So here's what we have this year. Here's what we get to replace within that. Versus the opposite of that is determining the lowest cost of ownership or the optimum time for replacement and aligning the capital budget with that. So just an example here, but when you look at the total budget, you'll see that generally, your capital budget makes up about 30% of the total spend, where your operating cost makes up more like 60% to 70% of the total spend, right? And so when we have a year where we need to cut back, generally, the first thing that happens is we cut capital spend. Okay, instead of replacing, you know, all five Tahos and that Public Works truck, maybe we're only replacing three Tahos and, you know, that Public Works truck. So what happens, though, when we do that is then the overall average age of the fleet goes up. We're running vehicles longer, and therefore, our operating cost goes up. The only way to lower both buckets, if you will, both pieces of the pie, is to lower the average age of the fleet. So let me give you an example of how that's possible. So this is a 2021 Chevy Silverado. That vehicle essentially, I'm sorry, I can't see from here. So that vehicle could be purchased on the state contract that year for $38,000, okay? The, thank you, okay. That's good. I was making sure there was not a number up top. So we, so essentially, you guys are doing a great job of purchasing from that perspective, right? You're buying vehicles well below market value, right? You're using your government buying power. But one thing that cities generally aren't looking at is what vehicles are worth if they sell them at the right time. So we pulled some third-party data to show you an example. This is right smack dab in the middle of the pandemic, right? These units were 2023, 2022s that had 15,000 miles on them. And so that was the average sample size. Those units were sold for $35,000 at auction, okay? So if this was your truck, you would have bought it, run it for two years, sold it back into the market, and essentially would have only cost you three grand in capital for that total period of time to run that vehicle. The reason I'm showing you pandemic essentially numbers, if you will, is to show you the opportunity, even when incentives have gone essentially down slightly, when we've seen buying power change slightly with the government entities, commercial entities, everybody's seen inflation, right, over the last few years, that the buying power that you still have as government entity is incredible, right? We can turn around and sell that vehicle back into the open market essentially for close to what we bought it for. So we're shortening that capital spend. So the point here being is that when we sell vehicles, and this is one of the things that Enterprise Rent-A-Car has been doing for a really long time. We're essentially buying 100,000 Chevy Silverados at the same time, right? So Enterprise is buying low, just like playing the stock market, and selling them back into the market, selling high, right? That's how we reduce that capital spend. We're showing government entities how they can essentially leverage the open market, determine how long we need to run the asset. We don't want to replace them too soon either, but when is the optimum time for replacement and sell them back into the market for the highest dollar, okay? And so this essentially illustrates what we're going to look at in the analysis here coming up. So for most of you guys, you see here, the orange line represents your depreciation. So I think for most folks, they think, okay, even with your personal vehicle, right? You drive the vehicle off the lot, it takes a depreciation hit in that first year. You want to stretch out the depreciation cost as long as you can, right? Where government entities really don't have the same depreciation hit in year one. You're buying them below market, right? So we're closing that gap. The point being, though, is that when you look at the total cost over its life, yes, you lose value as the vehicle ages and your operating costs start to increase, right? An old truck has a little bit more maintenance than a new truck. Same thing, fuel economy, it doesn't run as efficient. But the most important component, when you look at this, is the resale value. What we could have sold that asset for if we had gotten rid of it at the right time, so it's that orange line right there in the middle of that circle. What is it worth if we get rid of it at the right time? And that's significant to what we're going to be looking at in this analysis. So that's what allows for all of those cities that we're working with, again, to replace vehicles more frequently. And in doing so, we're now lowering operating costs by default. If we're replacing vehicles sooner, our maintenance and our fuel costs should come down slightly, right? So that's what we would anticipate, again, an old truck having higher maintenance than what we would consider a new truck. So how do we sustain this long term, right? So if we're going to, and I'm just going to give you an example here. Is there a question? Okay. So if we're going to sustain this long term, how do we fund this, right? I'm going to give you a quick example here. So let's just say in round numbers, you have 100 vehicles. If you continue to pay cash for vehicles, and we're going to replace them every five years, you essentially would replace 20 a year. If the capitalized costs, or the average capitalized cost was 50 grand per vehicle, for example, then it would cost you $1 million to replace those 20 vehicles that you'd need to build in this year into your budget, but then every year after that, right? In order to sustain that replacement plan, if you're replacing vehicles every five years, right? So you could do that absolutely with Enterprise. We have a couple cities that do that, but for the most part, that would require a lot of capital to build into the budget that maybe you have some other priorities that that capital would be better used for. And so most, I would say 95% of our cities don't pay cash to sustain a replacement plan. So the other option would be you could do traditional finance, right? Where you're financing the same $50,000 vehicle, but from a principal portion of the payment, you're, you know, outlaying 10 grand a year, right? So for the same 20 vehicles, you're only outlaying 200,000 instead of the full $1 million, right? So again, we're stretching that cash flow over a five-year finance essentially. So that's better, but it still ties up capital in a depreciating asset. What 95% of our clients are using is the market value finance. So very similar to a finance in that you maintain all the equity in the vehicle, and it gives us, essentially, the difference is that it gives us the cash flow advantage of only financing the portion of the vehicle we're going to use over that term. So, for example, same 20 vehicles, if we know we're going to sell it, and it, we're, you know, going to essentially finance it down to a residual value over a five-year period when we sell it, the equity above what it's essentially, over the payoff, is yours. So in this scenario here, and I'm going to show you a quick example of that, you would only be outlaying 8100, so a net difference, you know, 880, or 38,000 in terms of cash flow. So real quick, this is probably a better illustration to explain it. Too many transitions. So traditional finance, again, just think about your own personal truck. You would, that $50,000 vehicle, you pay it off to zero. So whether you finance it for three, four, or five years. When you sell it, let's say it's worth 20,000, you get the 20 grand back at the end, right? So that's totally fine. You could do that, but you're essentially putting that $20,000 in the glove box, and you're driving around for four or five years until you sell it, and then you get your equity back at the end, right? The market value finance, another name for it is an open-end lease, is essentially a cash flow tool. So again, it tastes, feels, and smells just like a finance. The only difference is we're going to finance the portion we're using over the term. So if we think it's going to sell for 20,000 at the end of that term, why don't we just finance it down to 10? So essentially, we're only financing the $40,000. So from that perspective, your monthly and annual payment would be less because we're financing less. When it sells for 20, that 10 grand above the payoff, that's yours. That equity comes back to you. So the open-end lease is very different from a dealership lease. Dealership lease is a closed-end lease that has mileage penalties and wear and tear penalties, which does not work in the government application. We are not recommending at all. The open-end lease, it's just a lease because, from an accounting perspective, it could be treated as an operating or a capital lease, right? But for all intents and purposes, it's just like a finance. It smells, feels, tastes just like it. We sell it at any point throughout the term. The equity is yours, no mileage penalties, no wear and tear penalties. It's just a cash flow tool. So what it allows us to do is essentially sustain this long term because now we're not requiring as much capital in order to replace vehicles, and we're not having to build in as much every single year. And therefore, we're also lowering our operating costs at the same time. Any questions on that part before we move forward? Because that's
Mayor.
a big piece of it.
I just had one question. So that slide that you're on right now, so is the timing the same then? So traditional finance, I pay it down to zero. How long does it take me to do that?
So we would actually structure the asset based on when we want to replace it. So I'll just give you an example. For most of the city fleet, they're doing pretty low mileage. So most of them, we would be replacing on a cadence of a four- or five-year term, depending on the resale value. For a construction company that we would work with that may be doing 30,000 miles a year, that we need to get rid of the vehicle right around 100,000 miles, we would probably structure it on a three-year term. So we would back into how long we want to finance it based on when we're going to replace it.
Okay. So what you're saying in here is the selling price in both of these scenarios, the market value that you've got, is the same
Correct.
even with the 10,000 residual?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, 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 sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Let's make this easy. You guys want to ask questions, just go ahead. And if there's anyone in the audience that wants to ask questions, go ahead and raise your hand. This is, go ahead.
So how does the fuel figure into the effective vehicle lifecycle? Because, I mean, if you, once you get rid of that vehicle and you get a new vehicle, another vehicle, you're still going to be putting gas in it, too. So if you kept it for 10 years instead of five years, the fuel cost would be the same for each, you know, whether you had it or not.
Yeah, the fuel, the fuel price, right, is going to be the constant, right? But what the differentiator, when you look at the total operating cost, is the fuel, two pieces, two, fuel degradation, right, and fuel technology. So fuel degradation is just, the engine just doesn't run as efficient as it ages. I mean, some of these vehicles are 10, 15, 20 years old, right? And they've been run a pretty long time. And so they may have lost a mile or per gallon as they age, right? But the delta is also the new technology that's available on vehicles. So when you look at, and this is a good example, like a 2010 F-150, brand-new off-the-line, probably got 14, 15 miles per gallon when it was brand-new, and it's lost a little bit of fuel economy since then, right? Is it's just not running as efficient? Where now, new half-tons are probably getting 17, 18 miles per gallon just based on those CAFE standards that the government has mandated. So it's really a twofold. We're going to see the fuel efficiency from a technology standpoint improve. And we're also going to see that, because we're not running vehicles for, on average, your lifecycle today is around 13 years long. That's the average. So that means we have some vehicles that are running even longer than that. And so when we're running vehicles for 15, 20 years, we just, we would expect they're not going to be as efficient from a fuel standpoint. Now, we can't control the price of fuel, but then what the city is doing a great job is, they're buying in bulk, and that's the most cost-effective thing that you can do from a price-per-gallon standpoint. So they're doing, we would continue, we would recommend to continue doing that. But now, as we're improving the lifecycle, we're going to be able to shrink that fuel cost. And we're also, and we're going to get there, but if we're able to, you know, through more conversations, right-size the fleet, if the vehicles are newer, do we need every single spare, for example? So that's also going to help as we have maybe some vehicles that are slightly underutilized based on, and that's really common, by the way. I mean, if you're running vehicles for 13 years or longer, the city has to have some spares. Because if a vehicle goes down, they have to be able to operate, right? And so that's common. So but for the cities that we work with, they've seen, okay, now we've got this healthy vehicle lifecycle. We're replacing vehicles around every five years or so, that maybe these assets can be even changed from an application standpoint. We're running a one-ton because it was in Public Works, and now we're using it in this application where maybe we only need a compact pickup truck for that. So those are some of the other efficiencies that we've determined through, we've had pretty in-depth conversations on, okay, what is the right application for each asset? And wow, the fuel efficiency on a Ford Maverick's over 30 miles per gallon. Wow, if we run that in this capacity versus the half-ton that's only getting 17, what is the difference? So those are some conversations we'll be having with the city annually, because things will change in the city. Some of the applications will change and what's needed. So we'll continue to have those conversations on what the right application is, what's the right manufacturer? Hey, is it going to be more cost-effective from a resale standpoint to run Chevy this year? You know, is it Ford? Who's going to have the lower total cost of ownership as it relates to both that, the depreciation and that operating cost?
Okay, and one other quick thing. Do you then forecast what the vehicle is going to be able to sell for?
We do, yes, conservatively.
Because you don't know what the market's going to be.
That's right. That's why we have to be conservative with it, because things change, right? So what we've seen so far is we've seen, obviously, in the pandemic, the market was up almost 40, well, 41, 42%, right? And so we've seen in certain categories, it's dipped back down, more specifically within sedans and some of the SUVs. The trucks are still holding pretty strong. But what we do know is that it's nowhere close to where it was pre-pandemic. We've not gone anywhere close to where we were pre. So that's why I want to show you conservative numbers because we know that the market's going to change slightly, but we, here's what's going to normalize as well. What we've seen over the last couple of years, we've seen incentives go down from a, just a buying power standpoint. So you've just seen the cost of trucks on the lot are more expensive, right? And that's inflation, but it's also because the manufacturers aren't giving the same incentives that they were prior, right? So going into 2025 model year, the supply, we went from essentially under a 30-day supply during the pandemic, and there's no vehicles on lots, right? They were at a 90-day supply prior to the pandemic. So that's why they were giving away so many rebates during Christmas and everything. And then obviously, supply shorted so much, and that's why inflation went up so much, that they were under a 30-day supply. Now they're back up to a 60-day supply. And we're going to stay normal right around this range. They're not going to ever go back to 90-day supply. But what it's done is it's put pressure on the manufacturers. Now the incentives are going back up. So we'll see, we will see resale come down slightly, but we're going to see those incentives go back up. So everything's going to start to normalize, will never be where we were pre-pandemic, but we're going to be in a way better position. So that's the great news. So it's all, again, it's all going to even out, to your point. Any other questions on that part?
Just briefly, the flip side of that, though, is if there's not equity left, if you think ten thousand is our number, and it comes back and it's four thousand, who pays the six thousand difference? Does that come from the city?
Right, so that, that's absolutely right, yes. So one of the things that we have to watch is, one, okay, first of all, if we were, if we were financing it down to that close, where you were going to be upside down, we wouldn't have any clients. So that's why we're very conservative, and one, we determine how do we depreciate the asset, which means how much principal do we need to pay for that to be in a good equity position, and that's based on usage, right? So we're, and I personally have structured every single asset based on what the depreciation schedule needs to be. So for example, a police unit, that's going to depreciate faster, one, because of its aftermarket cost and how it's used, right? So we have to be very cognizant of that when we're depreciating it, so we have it at a higher or more aggressive depreciation rate, so we'll pay it down to a lower balance. But all of that is, is looked at in advance. So a, in the future, again, conservative market value, based on a commercial or government application and how it's used, so we understand all of that, right, not based on Blue Book and some retail market, based on a commercial value index or Black Book, right? What do we anticipate it with X amount of miles in this condition in the future, right? And we dial it back from there. So we're setting these values very conservatively, because we have to provide an annual client review year over year and show you the results, right? So we want to make sure, again, we'd rather come under promise and over-deliver, right? We'd rather be able to come back to you and show you even higher results, but we sell a million vehicles a year. So we have to be really good at figuring out what these vehicles are going to sell for. If we make a hundred, a hundred-dollar mistake on our fleet, from a resale perspective, it's a two-hundred-million-dollar mistake. So we will make sure that, one, we're depreciating these or paying that principal down appropriately based on the asset. You'll have an account, and we're kind of skipping ahead a little here, but you'll have a client strategy manager that's meeting with staff a couple times a year to go through this, and then make adjustments if needed, right, and make recommendations. So we're looking at the market, we're watching how these vehicles are being depreciated, but you should be in a great spot. We, the likeliness of you being upside down is almost zero percent, right? Unless something changed significantly and these vehicles started doing fifty thousand miles a year, right, like an oil and gas truck. We have that happen in the commercial application where they start doing way more miles than what we're depreciating, but we can adjust it throughout the term as well. So that's why we're watching it. And if something, and to your point, sir, though, if something did change and the market went down, the city has the option to continue to run that asset. So you, if you're upside down, which you're not going to be, but you, and you said, okay, well, we need to, we're going to advise, you need to hold on to this asset for another year. It's not the right time to sell it. The optimum time is in that sixth year, not in that fifth year, right? So we're going to be, this is ongoing relationship. Think of us as your financial planner for this portfolio of assets, right? So that doesn't mean you're locked into selling it at that point. We'll be advising staff, but you guys have full control of when you sell them.
So to expand on something you said, you, you were talking about the mileage. Is there a limitation on the mileage per year?
No, sir. No mileage penalties, no wear and tear penalties. We only use the mileage as an indication on how that asset should depreciate in value. So, for example, a vehicle that's doing twenty thousand miles a year would depreciate in value a little bit faster than a vehicle that's only doing five thousand miles a year. And most of the vehicles are doing under ten thousand miles a year on average, with the exception of emergency response.
Okay, so I, I took the opportunity to go through this master equity lease agreement. So all of this language in here that talks about the fifteen thousand miles per year, forty-five thousand miles on a thirty, it's, it's not applicable?
Right, so there's an addendum, a capital lease addendum that will go with that, that removes section three C. You may not have received that yet. That was one of the additional addendums that I had to request later. But it essentially, that, that language in section three C of the master lease agreement is, is related to FASB thirteen. So the, the lease as it stands is an operating lease, and that language is required by FASB in order for it to, to pass the tests, for it to be an operating lease. That language is actually removed in the capital addendum. And if you don't have it, we'll make sure you get it.
Yeah, it was just a little confusing, because it, it purports to be an open-end equity lease, but it has language from a closed lease. So I was getting a little confused about what, what, is it a closed lease? Is it an open lease?
It is an open-end lease regardless. There's, the net lease or the closed-end lease is a completely different agreement. That language is specifically to accounting, it's accounting language.
Okay.
Required by GASB, GASB and FASB.
And then just a couple other quick, quick questions. Maybe you'll address this, I, I don't know, but there's some language in here that talks about service charges due at lease termination. Is there a schedule for that? How will we know what those charges are going to be? And then it goes on to say that it will be by reason of expiration or termination. So every time one of these leases expires, there's going to be an additional service charge?
Service charge is for us to set, well, and we're going to get there too, but the, it's for us to sell the vehicle and handle the title and the paperwork. I've gone through the entire schedule with Ava as well in terms of the, the costs. And in the analysis, which we're going to get to as well, all of our costs are built into that. So there's nothing that hasn't already been built in as it relates to what the city is going to expect. So through our RFP, that's all outlined and transparent, and that, that cost is already built into our analysis. Yes, sir.
So is that the same service fee that's on the, the agreement to sell?
Yes, sir. It's exactly the same.
Okay, so that, there will be some number there, or whatever the maximum permitted by, what?
It's three, it's three ninety-five.
I know I'm a lawyer, but what's the maximum permitted by law that, that you guys would use?
Well, it's, it's, it's all based on the TIPS RFP. So
So we don't know?
It's the due diligence that was done through the RFP, so all of those costs, and we'll, we'll make sure that those get entered in there, but it's three, three ninety-five.
Okay, and then just one more quick thing. We, we, you talked about the law enforcement vehicles, and, and another provision in here that I went through that actually brought me concern, specifically for the, the police units. It talks about alterations to the vehicles. We can't make alterations. So are you guys, for example, with a police vehicle, are you guys going to dress those out and deliver them? Are we going to be able to use our own people? And then there's language that says at the end of the lease, everything that's affixed to these vehicles belongs to you?
No, that's if you're in the case of default. If, if you default and you didn't pay us and we had to repo the vehicle, but, no, so
That's not what it says here. Any alterations to a vehicle will become the, and remain the property of the lessor, and will be returned with such vehicle, upon such vehicles return.
I mean, I don't have the agreement in front of me, I'm sorry, I'm
No, no, no. I, I'm just trying to make sense of a lot of this stuff, but
In business practice, and we will, we'll work through all of the, the legal language and everything to make sure that everybody's on the same page with our contracts team, but in business practice, the equipment is yours, as long as the city doesn't default, right? So just like the bank. So if, if the bank was financing a vehicle and, you know, a client defaulted, they would pick up the vehicle, right? So that's, that's what that means. But with that said, no, the, the police department and any other department will outfit the vehicle however they need, run it like they, they need to. If they want to sell it with the aftermarket on it, great. For most of the emergency response, it has to be de-rigged and de-identified. And so we generally will remove, we do remove that equipment prior to, to being sold. But if it makes sense to sell the asset with a ladder rack on it, because it helps from a resale perspective, they can do that, or they can take the ladder rack off and put it on the other, the new replacement vehicle. So that's, that's totally your, your option.
If we could, Jeremy, let's let her just finish her presentation. She covers a lot of this stuff that you've been asking, because I've seen the presentation already. And then we're not taking action today, so that contract has a lot to be desired. We all know that, so we'll work through that too. But for time's sake, I need to let her keep going.
Thank you, thank you. So as I alluded to earlier, you're going to have a account team that's designated to Granberry, right? So an account that knows, a team that knows you guys, that understands the fleet, and can provide those recommendations year over year. So I'm the senior account executive. I will be on the account for the life of the account. My job is to analyze the expense on the front end and to help from an onboarding perspective. So I will work with the client strategy manager throughout the whole first year to make sure it's a seamless transition for the city. But the client strategy manager is required to come out here at least twice a year. If, in, in the first year, we've got a lot more touch points than just two times to make sure that, again, onboarding goes well. But there, there, one of the meetings is the annual client review, which is a year-over-year analysis on all of your fleet expenditures. So how do we perform in terms of the depreciation costs, resale, everything is graded, even looking at the city's maintenance costs, fuel costs, how is everything trending based on what we projected? Think of it as a, a report card, essentially, and a roadmap going forward, which is great. And then your client strategy manager will also be meeting with you for your fleet planning meeting, which is really important. So that generally lines with the model year. And the reason is because as we forecast what needs to be replaced for this year, and for example, the police department, generally, most cities, you know, are getting their budget October first, and then they're going to source the vehicles, and then they're going to get in line with the outfitters to get the, the vehicles outfitted with everybody else, right, which we know that that's a long process, even pre-pandemic, to, to get the Tahoe outfitted and into service, where if we can order vehicles or source vehicles as that model year is opening, right, and get in line for any of these vehicles, they can start getting into the upfit process sooner and deliver it a bit, a little bit quicker. And so essentially, that's what we would do is recommend, you know, we'll help the city build out the budget every single year, what needs to be replaced, what we're recommending. We go through all the manufacturers as well and determine, should we be running Chevy this year? Is it Ford? You know, police doesn't have a lot of options, but, you know, for, for trucks, we can look at the total cost of ownership, and it's always up to the city on what they decide. And then they have an account fleet coordinator on your team as well that's designated, that can answer any calls, questions, you know, billing, anything. You don't have to just call one eight hundred number to, to get an answer. So they're there to support staff. And then we've got a coordination team at Corporate, too, that works with the manufacturers and logistics behind the scenes, too. Our local leadership team is going to be checking in with staff throughout the year to make sure, especially through that first year of onboarding, that everything is going as expected. And as we have communicated, again, we want to make sure that we're under-promising and over-delivering, but if you've ever rented a car from Enterprise, if you've ever been asked if you're completely satisfied, the Enterprise Service Quality Index, actually, they wrote a book about it. Every single department within our organization is graded on customer service, which is why what we're telling you, you know, being, you know, we want to make sure that what we're telling you, we, we execute on, because we, we hire a third-party company as well that's going to call staff and make sure everything is going according to plan. And if it's a, even somewhat satisfied, it's a failing grade for our entire Dallas-Fort Worth operations. So it's a lot of accountability and a lot of touch points to make sure that, that what we said we were going to do that we did execute on. We have an entire team at Corporate that is experts in license and title and registration and maintenance and all of that, and from a resource standpoint, which is great. So let's talk a little bit more about resale. We talked a lot about selling vehicles at the right time, what that market value looks like. Again, it's just like playing the stock market. Want to buy low, we want to run for the appropriate amount of time based on that asset. Obviously, we need to make sure we're depreciating the aftermarket cost appropriately as well, and then we want to sell it back into the market. But selling it to the right buyer is equally as important. And this is Enterprise's biggest competitive advantage. Most folks don't know, we make more money reselling our vehicles than we do renting them. We just figured out, again, we're buying a hundred thousand Chevy Silverados or Tahos at one time, so from a buying power standpoint, a commercial entity, we have very similar buying power as a government entity. So we figured out how to buy low a long time ago. Essentially, renting them just covers some of our operating costs. We run them for X amount of time, we sell them right back into the market. And that's the biggest profit center for Enterprise, is reselling those assets. So our clients on the government end, you're just piggybacking on the infrastructure we've already established. This is our blueprint, essentially, that we're sharing. So we have a remarketing team, all they do is hand-sell our vehicles. So, you know, they'll pick up the asset and then determine which buyer's going to give us the highest rate of return, which means that allows us to, we, you know, fifteen percent of the time, we can use auction. I mean, a nineteen ninety-nine F one fifty is going to sell for what it's going to sell for. I mean, it doesn't matter really where you take it at that point when it's that old. But as we start selling vehicles sooner, it makes a big difference. And selling it direct back to dealer outpaces auction by ten percent. So in that example that we looked at earlier, that twenty thousand dollar truck, it's an additional two grand back to the city. And this is significant. This is, again, where it comes into shrinking that capital expense. Selling it at the right time, to the right buyer, at the right time of the year, where the market is the hottest. And in two thousand and fourteen, I was, it was fourteen and fifteen, I was in Houston. I don't know if you remember, but oil went down and the market was flooded with white pickup trucks. As you can imagine how many white pickup trucks we manage out of Houston. So we shipped them up to Kansas City, and it netted our clients more money. So if the market's flooded, and sometimes we, we can, we're a market changer. If we want to flood the market, we can. So we know where to sell vehicles, what time of year to sell the vehicles. We're watching that and advising, and we're aligning your fleet plan with that. Sell these assets at the right time. Most importantly here, having this replacement plan, right, if it costs the city about the same, and we can replace vehicles every five years instead of every thirteen, we're lowering operating costs by doing so, because we're not running vehicles as long. The few, the city staff now has vehicles that are reliable, the right asset for the right job, right, the right equipment, especially for the police department, to have the best technology, the safest vehicles, is those can be turned over a little bit more frequently. So it's a win-win. Again, I would, as we go into this analysis here in a second, I would encourage you to look at this from a cost-neutral standpoint. Again, if it costs the city the same to do what we're proposing. Go ahead. Oh, I thought you had a question, sorry. Okay. All right, so we're going to dive in to the analysis here. We're really going to have to pull this one up. Can you guys see that okay on your end? Okay. Okay, so the first one we're going to run through is an example of replacing vehicles in the first year, anything that's older than six years. I'm going to go through, I'm going to go through this first one a little bit more granularly, so that everybody understands where all the numbers come from. When we go through the option B and C, essentially, you're going to see that there's really a slight change just to year one, right? So I want to run through all this, and please stop me, though, if there's a, a question on what a number is, okay? We're going to start at the top left-hand corner. So the fleet that we're talking about here in this analysis, there's a hundred and seven vehicles. The average life cycle is right around twelve and a half, thirteen years. So that's based on your current purchase history. Your current maintenance expense is around two hundred and twenty-five dollars per vehicle per month. And that number, we have gone through with staff pretty granularly. We pulled all the records from your parts and your labor costs and broken this out to this segment of the fleet specifically. And again, I've reviewed this with, with Michael and Ava and Aaron. So two twenty-five per vehicle per month today is what you're averaging. And based on type of vehicle and age and condition, you're averaging around eleven miles per gallon today. A big part of that is because the emergency response vehicles are not as, as fuel-efficient. So fleet growth, there are two vehicles, you see negative one point eight seven. What does that mean? There are two vehicles that we've identified that don't need to be replaced. So if the view, if the fleet was newer, we could downsize by those two. There might be a handful of other vehicles that we identify in the future through more conversations, but for now, based on the analysis and the way it stands, we've got two vehicles we'd downsize. The average annual mileage at eighty-nine hundred. You've got some idle time at twenty-six percent, based on application type of vehicle. And fuel costs, we use three twenty-five as the average. Obviously, we've seen it go way up, we've seen it go way down, but we're looking at a ten-year projection. So we're not just looking at today, we're looking at over the next ten years, so an average of three twenty-five per gallon. The proposed fleet at one oh five, so again, we're just downsizing by those two units we just talked about, and we're proposing a five-year life cycle in place of your current almost thirteen years. New maintenance, we project to go down on average to a hundred and eighteen dollars per vehicle per month. So some are a lot less, they're only doing five thousand miles a year, they're not going to average a hundred and eighteen, but we have some emergency response units that are going to need more tires and brakes and more preventative maintenance, so those are going to be more. But again, that's just the average. The city, just an important thing to note, has decided they're likely going to keep all of the maintenance within their in-house shop. It's going to create a lot of efficiencies. As you can imagine, vehicles that are a lot newer, they are going to require mostly just preventative maintenance versus repair. So it's going to help the mechanics shift some of their time away from that repair work on this segment of the fleet, do the preventative, and also give them potentially some time for the equipment. And all the lawn mowers and the backhoes and all the other things that they're maintaining today, quite, quite a lot of equipment there. So Enterprise has a maintenance program that can budget the maintenance costs, and we're willing to guarantee the cost at a hundred and eighteen dollars per vehicle per month. So we know that this, the city fleet maintenance shop can maintain that vehicle for a hundred and eighteen, because we, if we can budget it through a local shop for that much, we're willing to guarantee the cost likely, and I think generally, the thought process is that the in-house shop should be more cost-effective, right? So then the city should be able to maintain it at a hundred and eighteen as well. And then we're estimating new mile per gallon around sixteen in place of the eleven today. And that's as it phases in, right? So the new vehicles compared to the old. Any questions on the assumptions at the top to start before we dive into the numbers below? Okay. So if you look at the orange line right across the top there, it says current, that represents your average budget year. So based on your twelve and a half, almost thirteen-year life cycle, you're purchasing around eight and a half vehicles per year. So that, you're, you own all one oh seven, and that puts your purchase budget right around four hundred and sixty with some, some capital, it says upfront capital, but that's your equipment, so like aftermarket for those vehicles. Maintenance, we see on average be around two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Again, that's labor and parts, based on that two twenty-five we just talked about, and fuel right around five twenty-six. You are getting some equity back at the end, which we're recognizing, but we're selling vehicles on average thirteen years or longer. And in a lot of cases, even the emergency response vehicles are being rolled down into other applications. Some of them are airport vehicles now, some of them are in different departments, being used in different capacities. So we're essentially running them until they're not worth anything. So on average, the city is spending right around one point three for this segment of the fleet. Again, that's both your capital and operating spend. Do you have any questions on that part? Okay. So in the first year, twenty twenty-four, we're recommending in this model, and we're going to look at three different options. So this is the most aggressive option, but one of the strategies here is replacing assets that are essentially way past that point of optimum time, right? They're so old, but they're costing us the most in operating cost. Plus, looking at a group of assets that are at the optimum time or close to that optimum time and have more equity. And so that equity is going to help us offset the cost, that capital expense of getting in, getting into the life cycle, okay? So this, again, is the most aggressive plan, but slightly more cost-effective than the other two we're going to look at. So in the first year, seventy vehicles would be replaced. You would still own the thirty-five, and you'd be using that open-end lease or that market value finance on those seventy. The capital budget for those seventy would be six ninety-seven, and then there is some aftermarket on those at one forty-six. Maintenance, we would anticipate to go from two eighty-eight to one fifty-five in that first year, and the, the decrease, because we're replacing essentially more than half the fleet in that first year. So we're going from vehicles that have repair costs, and for a lot of these vehicles, as we cycle them out, for most of them doing eighty-nine hundred on average, I mean, with the exception of some of the emergency response vehicles, we'll be replacing before we even need brakes and tires. Every five years, some of these vehicles doing five thousand miles a year, might not even need them up to that twenty-five, thirty-thousand mile mark. So again, from two eighty-eight to one fifty-five in that first year, and we see fuel dip from four, sorry, five twenty-six to three ninety in that first year. Equity, so this is really the significance of how much these vehicles are worth. So those seventy units are essentially worth six hundred and sixty-three thousand when we sell those. So those are your current legacy fleet, the vehicles that we'll be selling, that you can use that equity and roll it back towards the lease payment, just like a down payment. So you can take any of that equity and apply it and lower your future year's cost, or we can cut you a check back for it, and you can put it in the bank and, you know, make your payments that way as well, either way. So in the first year, again, assuming you take the check back for the six sixty-three, your net fleet budget would be seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, or a difference of about six hundred thousand that first year. In the second year, and again, this being the most aggressive plan, so you, as you notice, we're, we're replacing a lot of vehicles in that first year, again, due to the strategy of leveraging as much equity, because these vehicles aren't going to be worth any more today than they are today. Again, due to the strategy of leveraging as much equity, because these vehicles aren't going to be worth any more today than they are today, tomorrow, right? So again, leveraging as, as much equity as we can, but also lowering the operating cost in that first year by replacing all those aged vehicles. So in the second year, we replace eight. And you can see in the following, then seven, then twelve, then eight, until the full fleet is fully integrated or cycled through. So as you notice here, your payment goes up slightly as you're adding vehicles onto the finance. You have some aftermarket depending on which unit was replaced that year. And you can see there, maintenance starts to flatline out as we're, we replaced the significance of the old fleet in that first year. And now we see it start to taper down, where then we would, we would anticipate for it to be a more constant going forward. Same thing with fuel, three ninety. Now we see it start, we're replacing those older assets until we would anticipate for it to start to flatline out as well. And equity, you'll notice here, you've got less vehicles coming back to you. But even those eight vehicles are worth a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, just goes to show how much more they're worth as you're selling the new fleet. So again, we're, we're phasing out the old fleet first. And the end of that fifth year, you'll see of nine hundred and thirty thousand coming back to you. And that is the equity above payoff. So I just want to pause there, right? So the seventy vehicles that we replaced in the first year were worth six hundred and sixty-three thousand. These vehicles, you own them outright, so there is no payoff. They're not worth as, there's, you know, maybe twenty or thirty of them that are worth a good amount. And then the rest of them are just not worth very much because they're really old. They're all above, you know, that ten-year mark. The nine hundred and thirty thousand that comes back to you at the end of the fifth year is above the payoff. So in my example, we financed it down to ten and it sold for twenty. It's the equity above the payoff. So these vehicles are worth probably two or three times more than that. But again, after you satisfy the payoff, you're getting nine hundred and thirty thousand in equity back. So this just goes to show how much more vehicles are worth if you sell them at the right time. It's the most important component in this total equation. So you have the option, in that scenario, you can roll those into the lease payment, which a lot of cities do. Because that lowers your future budget item, right? What we're building in next year in the future year. Or we can cut you a check back for it. So overall, and you'll see in the future years, right? So we do, we replace the seventy, then the eight, then the seven, the twelve, and the eight. Then you're replacing the seventy all over again. We're showing you two life cycles. So what happens, because the question we always got was, that's great, but what happens in the next ten or five years? So we wanted to show you two full life cycles here. So we're placing the seventy, eight, seven, twelve, and eight all over again. So sustainably, and this is going to save the city around three hundred thousand dollars. They're able to replace vehicles every five years instead of every thirteen. You're going to have safer vehicles, better technology. And essentially get the account team and all the recommendations and analysis that we do on an annual basis. To help make sure that the city is making the best financial decision. Which means if it makes sense to hold on to that asset for the sixth year and it really makes that financial sense, that's what we're going to recommend, right?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Could you look on, on the twenty twenty-eight year, back to that nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Are those the leased vehicles, the seventy leased vehicles?
Correct.
Being sold?
Yes.
Well, when do they get replaced? The next year?
They're, well, they're essentially, you're, you're looking at them and they're going to be replaced at the same time. So once the seventy are fully integrated, they're all, like, they're all in the lease payment essentially.
Okay. I, I see the seventy being replaced in twenty twenty-nine and the equity is fifty-nine thousand. So what I'm looking at is-
The way the model works is it, it essentially looks, and this is just how it calculates. But it essentially looks at like December thirty-first and January first. That's how, that's how essentially it works out too. Does that make sense?
Nope.
So it's essentially getting replaced at the exact same time?
Well, you're, you're showing me a ten-year cycle or one, two, yeah, ten-year cycle. And you're saying we're buying them in five-year increments, I mean incrementally over five years. Well, in year five, I'm selling eight vehicles for nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
No, again, it's, it's those seventy vehicles that are getting replaced all over again. We're, it's, the way it calculates essentially is that those seventy are getting, essentially, you're getting the credit back for it on, call it January or December thirty-first. And the new ones arrive January first.
Which leads me to my next question. Do y'all bring a truck here and you pick up all these ones that are going to market without leaving the new ones here?
No, no, sir. So we would deliver the new ones first and then come back and get your, your old assets. Likely, most of the departments have tools and things that they need to get out of them. And so it's, it's kind of up to you from a timing standpoint. But we, once they're picked up, it's our average days to sell is twenty-one days or less. And then we get you, to get you a check back, physically get it sold for you.
Okay. Good for now. Thank you.
And there is equity that's not recognized in here. So as you can imagine, you're recognizing the, the, those seventy. But in years twenty, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, there's equity that's built into the lease that's not being recognized. Does that make sense? So there's equity built up on the vehicles that haven't been replaced in the future years, but we're just not recognizing it in here. So the net savings is more than this, but again, we have to cut it off at some point. Because you've got to, as long as vehicles are being financed, you'll always have equity tied in the lease, if that makes sense. You're always paying them down from a principal standpoint. Questions on that?
Other questions?
So the other two options were essentially to look at, and again, this was, Mr. Kaufman wanted to look at. What would it look like if we replaced everything six years or older, seven years or older, or ten years or older? What was, what was requested? So the only change in this model is year one. So the difference here, in the first one, we looked at everything that was six years or older. This is everything that's seven years or older. So there was only a difference of five vehicles. So you notice we only replaced sixty-five instead of seventy. So your payment's just a little bit less because we're only replacing sixty-five. And equity is less by about a hundred grand. So it just goes to show that those five vehicles were the newer ones that were worth a lot more. And again, this is just an option of a different way we could phase in. So again, maintenance is not impacted as much because we're not replacing as many vehicles and same thing with fuel. But pretty close from a total cost standpoint. And then on year, the following one, on year ten and up, yep. So this one would be the slower phase in. As you can see here, we have thirty-nine vehicles that are ten years of age or older. So a little less than half of the fleet is older than ten years today. Things about, I think it equates to about thirty-eight percent of the fleet is older than ten years. So in this scenario, we'd replace the thirty-nine vehicles. And our lease payment would be three thirty-seven with a little bit of aftermarket on those assets. We don't see as significant of a decrease in maintenance again, because we're only replacing those thirty-nine in the first year. But we are still cutting, cutting the cost quite a bit. And then we see fuel dip as well. And then, just to point out here, the equity in those thirty-nine is only a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So that just goes to show how much were more, you know, the, again, those vehicles that were essentially those other twenty or thirty that we were going to replace in the first model, how much more those are worth. Because these thirty-nine are only worth a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Just because they're, they're aged. And some, you know, that was the, the average age. So there was some that were quite a bit older than that.
So when y'all, when y'all come pick up the trucks and you go sell them. Is the price established before you sell them, how much we're getting paid or when you actually sell them?
So especially on the, the first round of the first year, as the city's getting, you know, understanding our process. We're going to definitely over-communicate all this, but, so we will set a floor. So we'll go through with city staff and show you, we've already established what we think these assets are going to be worth. But we'll, again, when we pick them up, we'll look at that list and we'll set a floor. And then our team will go to work to sell them for as much as they possibly can. If for some reason, it comes back and it's missing the quarter panel and we weren't aware of that and it affects the resale slightly, we're going to communicate that to staff. Like, hey, we didn't know this truck wasn't running, right? We always have the option there to, hey, what do we want to do in this scenario? But for the most case, most of those vehicles that wouldn't be running are not evaluated at a very high market, market value. Because they're, you know, older than ten years of age anyways. But we'll set a floor and communicate with you on that. And then our team goes to work to sell it for more than that. Any questions on the three different plans and how they vary? It's really just year one that changes, but.
I think we're good.
Okay.
I do have one question. You have a lot of, a large number of references here that, cities that have, that you're working with. Those cities that may have, may have turned you down, what was their reason?
Cities that decided not to work with us.
Right.
I can speak for my experience. I had a situation where the city manager left in the middle of the process. And the public works, the city of Bergen, I never got to present to council. But public works director took over as the interim. And so they didn't feel comfortable taking it to council. They decided not to do business with us. I've had a school district that with all the tax cuts and changes, just, they didn't have any money to begin with. And they just didn't feel like they, I mean, I don't, they couldn't afford anything. That was a scenario, but can't think of anything else that would cause them not to do business with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy, you got any follow-up? My concern was, was to pick up versus not having something to work with. I want to ensure that that never happens, obviously.
Yeah, you'll notify us when you're ready for us to-
We don't have surplus vehicles, so we need, if you're going to pick up a police car, we need one to take its place.
Yes, sir.
And that's a concern because it takes a little while to gear those police cars up. And we're wanting to work with our current vendors and you said you could do that.
Yes, sir. And I talked with the chief last week and the goal here for their process is just to keep things the same, to keep it really simple. Continue to use Caldwell and their upfitter so that they don't have any disruption.
So I just, I had a couple, a couple of questions, thoughts. So vehicle replacement is based off of age and miles. And so we have the opportunity, so just thinking of a couple of things. I mean, we've got a custodial staff that does all our public buildings. And they're running around in a pretty tight area, you know, driving from maybe here out to the airport, which is only a handful of miles down the street. So that car's going to, you know, have fewer miles on it and a longer age. Would we still turn that car over at five years? Or would the city have the option to say, we'd like to hang on to that vehicle? And understanding what the, what the, you know, cost analysis looks like. If we hold that longer, even though it's got, you know, more age on it, but a lot less miles, how, how does that get managed?
You have full control. City always has the, the option to do whatever the city wants to do. But we will help you look at the cost. Now, what we know is that there's two things that depreciate the asset. It's not just mileage, but it is age.
Okay.
And what that vehicle would be worth. And then that would be a part of that analysis that your client strategy manager would help the staff with on an annual basis. Especially in a situation where it's a, a one-off or it only does three hundred miles a year or something, or dump truck. I mean, even medium duty, we're looking at on an exception basis, absolutely. So we want to make sure we're depreciating those accordingly.
So all these vehicles that you sell, do you have a list of customers or clients that you sell them to? Or do they all go to, they all go to auction?
No, we only use auction about fifteen percent of the time. Eighty-five percent of the time, we go back direct to dealers. So you're talking all the franchise dealers, the note lots, all the independent wholesalers. We pin all of them against each other. And so their marketing divisions, it's pretty strategic in determining what that, where that asset's going to sell for the most, right? So is it, it could be at auction. I mean, if oil, oil went back up, you know, and sending them out to Midland and the auction, you know, there, there could be an avenue where it does make sense to do that. But that's, that's again, one, one of the things that we're evaluating and recommending, yeah.
Sort of rhetorical now, Chris and Michael, but I'm, I'm sure with it, you know, we now understand, you know, kind of how this model works. And just looking at, is this something we could do ourselves? And particularly, I think, secondly, is, is, you know, we've got the contract tightened up a little bit more with the correct language. Have Jeremy go through it and really understand, you know, I understand the savings on here. But what are all the costs and fees and, you know, associated of you guys running and managing this program? So we really, you know, if I was doing this, that's what I'd want to look at. It is, what are we paying for your service to manage this for us? Just obviously, that's not a free service. And how did the financials work out? And then if we could, then we'd have to look at that. If we did it ourselves, what that would look like. And then of course, you know, I'm sure, you know, not to take away, your presentation was very good. I'm sure there's some other companies out there that, that have similar services that do this. And probably taking a look at those. And then also, you know, looking at the list of who, you know, your current clients are. You know, one of the things we always, or I always do is I make some phone calls. The mayor is from Comanche, that would be a phone call on my mind if that hadn't happened. And just find out how the program's going and, and, you know, what are their pluses and minuses? To give us a feel of how this is really rolled out and working in some other cities.
Yes, sir, we would encourage that. And I think city staff has reached out to a couple of cities already and gotten some feedback. We've been able to talk through those. Yeah, so the only thing that I would say related to why, why would a city not want to do this on their own? It is a question that does come up in every city council, so it's a very, it's a very good question. Our biggest competitive advantage by far is our ability to resell vehicles, hands down. Nobody can do it better than we can. To understand the market that we do, to, to be able to physically resell these assets back into the market for what we do. That piece of it, you know, a city can go out and get a funding source, right? City can source vehicles, take more time, obviously more administrative time. You may have to hire somebody who's, you know, that's their entire job, right? But at the end of the day, our ability to advise, our ability to help you from an analysis standpoint, to continue to evaluate this year over year and understand when to sell vehicles. That, hands down, it gives us the, the biggest competitive advantage. But in addition, the, the cost to do business with us, which we've reviewed with staff as well, is all built into this analysis. So that's a part of the, the cost, it's all baked in. So it's not in it on top of, and that you're going to be paying us, and then it's not a savings. It is, it is already built in, so in that lease payment, yes, sir.
So you mentioned that, I mean, we do a good job today with our government buying power, right? So it really is about turning the cars over quicker, you know, finding that optimum price when it's, you know, as you look at how vehicles depreciate and they depreciate very quickly. So how they, how they depreciate, when's the right time to sell them? And right now, we, we take our vehicles to auction, is that right? Is that how we just-
We have, we have an auction.
We have an auction, okay.
It's an online auction.
Okay.
For anywhere here where we're talking about on this grid.
Okay, all right. And that really becomes what you're showing, what the savings is, is we sell it at a better optimal time. And, and we get more for the vehicle as we reinvest those dollars back into replacement of, of vehicles, okay?
Just to be clear with everybody, you know, Michael, myself, Rick, Chester, all of the previous city managers that worked at this city. We've always bought our vehicles. When I came, we were lease purchasing them through agreements with lease purchase companies. And we were taking advantage of the low interest rates and, and historically, I've always thought like, you should buy your vehicles and pay for them. You shouldn't lease equipment like that. And this program is different than that, than what we used to do in-house and where we would lease them, keep them, and then sell them. It's a whole different process. So that's why we're bringing it to you, is consider, just give us direction, what your thoughts are. Offer, ask all, any questions you can to help us understand it more as well. And then we've had this meeting already in the back room with staff. And we've asked questions and got understanding of what we're talking about, doing the details. Some of the questions that Jeremy was asked, we asked in that meeting. We didn't have that agreement, but we knew that, that their agreement was going to have to have a lot of review and edits. Based on, it's a boilerplate agreement, I guess. But there are other cities that are doing this, that we've checked out. I know that Ava's done some research as well. And we're an open palette, we're generally in support of what we're talking about. But we want to make sure that, that everybody's on board with it. We don't want to just jump out there and say, this is what we want to do, please approve it. We're asking y'all to, to give us direction to help us gain confidence in what we're doing as well. So I, I believe Michael has spent the most time- So I believe Michael has spent the most time on this. If you want to add anything to what I've said, feel free to add to it, but literally, Michael and Jennifer have been working, and she's been gathering information to populate these spreadsheets from our staff, maintenance records from Ava, all the cost analysis that had to be gathered to be able to put this together. So we, we really need you to ask, ask questions as you feel free to, and, and get, help us dive into this even more. So as far as competition, I'm not aware that other people do this same type program. I've, I've been asked for years by Enterprise to have this meeting, and, and obviously, it's just not happening. So I had to hear it from her before, at a different environment before we had her here. So that's what got, got our, piqued our interest, so. But I really felt like all the staff was in pretty much agreement with what we've seen, and certainly interested in saving money. The, the other side to that is, is looking at those, those timelines, and I feel like keeping a vehicle for five years might be great for the PD, but for like the, the small pickup or van or whatever we buy to move custodial maintenance around, I'm not sure what that timeline needs to be. So those are some things we all have to work out internally and figure out what we want to do. Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I concur, Chris, and we, we have put a lot of hours in as, as, as needed. Mitch has had several follow-up calls. I know Ava and Mitch did some calls to other cities that use Enterprise, and have, Ava had lots of follow-up questions and good ones that were, were answered. You know, there's, there is some comfort in 100 Texas cities using Enterprise. I know there still may be a legal catch that Jeremy can, can, can see in the contract, and those are the things we'll obviously work through if we move forward. And it, it makes it easy to, to check with another city on things like that as well. How did y'all work this out or that out if we, if we decide to move forward? I think staff has generally landed on, if, if we decide to do this, we think, based on Ava and I's last discussion, that the 10-year, which is option C, the last one you're in front of you, is probably what we would recommend to Chris if we were making a recommendation, because it kind of eases into it, and it doesn't make that every, if you're going every five years, so large in the amount of vehicles that you're cycling. It starts, starts phasing it in a little slower. It's a good first year expenditure overall for us that we think we could afford, and we've already looked at the heavy fleet side of our system as well, and so we're, we kind of know what that number looks like that we're going to recommend to Chris as well.
So could you just click back to the, to the seven-year slide and just look at the difference? See when the million dollar shows up in 2027? It's the same million dollars both years. So the 70 vehicles is almost $700,000. Let's go to the, that's the six-year, go to the seven, 642, and that's replacing five less. And then the 10-year, the next slide?
Sorry.
There you go.
Click down this one.
Thirty-nine. So, you know, your, your lease payment's about $10,000 for a vehicle to start off with, and then as you get your full 107 vehicles, you're at about $10,000 for that, 10,000 or 11,000. And so really, if you look at the 10-year savings, 300,000, you go back to the six-year savings.
It's like 60,000.
It's $65,000 there, oh, $6,600 there. So the, like she said, enter into the mindset that it's a, it's a zero gain, we're not doing anything but rearranging the, the cards, so to speak, but you're getting newer equipment to operate with, and possibility of saving $300,000. So I'm not sure about the six, seven, or eight, or 10-year, you know, I'm, I'm still wondering about that. The last thing we want is to have the perception that all the city has is new vehicles, and we're paying, we're spending too much money on taxes, because that's the perception you're going to get when you rearrange your fleet for the same money you're spending now, instead of them saying, oh, look how, how smart they are for, for utilizing a program that actually costs less, small amount less, you know, $30,000 a year less, I mean, so it's a zero gain in our overall budget. But end up with a newer fleet, the only downside to that is you don't own it when you're through with it. So that's the downside, but you've got equity that you can sell back and start all over again, I guess, if the whole world came to an end, so. And then if the whole world came to an end, we'd all be in trouble, so.
Police use most of the vehicles? Or is that the largest fleet, police?
Police fleet is probably the largest, Tahoe fleet for sure. How many fleet do you have, Mitch? Forty-six? Thirty-six? What? That's not as many as I thought. So really, the Public Works probably has more vehicles than anybody.
And just to, just to clarify, when I said 10 years, that doesn't mean changing them out every 10 years, that just means to start, we recommend vehicles that are older than 10 years would be the first.
The six-year plan?
No, it's the 10-year plan, I'm sorry. That's why I wanted to make sure that was clear. If you go back to, this, this one is six-year in front of you, but-
What that means is, is we start off, let's go back, okay, right there, that's why right there, you're saying 10-plus years, that's replacing all the vehicles that are 10-plus years?
Correct. Correct, and that-
You were setting it up on a 10-year plan.
No, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify, because others were thinking that too in the audience, and I, no, this is, this would take a smaller number of vehicles first, which would mean after five years, if we were doing five years, we wouldn't have as many to change out in that five-year period. And it would allow us to ease in from a budget perspective a little better as well, is our thought.
Thank you. It's probably good that that didn't get recorded.
Thirty, 31 vehicles in the police fleet.
What'd you say?
Thirty-one vehicles in the police fleet.
Police station has 31?
Thirty-one.
Vehicles?
I guess my question is, when I look at this, is the current fleet is 107, and, and it, the fleet growth is, is actually decreasing to 105. In 10 years, with the growth that we, we're experiencing, that number's not going to go up?
It will.
It will, but we have, I mean, there, we have to have a starting point, so we're looking at the fleet as it is today, and this segment of the fleet, how would we replace it? Do we want to stay on a 13-year lifecycle, or does replacing them sooner make sense? So you would assume, though, if your fleet growth overall, just due to, you know, the city growing, then your current budget would go up as well.
Maybe. Crazy politics here.
One of the things that, like, City of Longview and other cities have done is, you know, they've had, you know, had maybe a reporter or something in the audience whenever they made the decision, and have had, you know, a newspaper article to explain the details of why the city's replacing vehicles more frequently, and I think that helps a little bit with the perception piece that you were talking about. I've seen many cities do that. I don't know if they just show up to the meetings, or if, I, I'm not sure how that works, but we have a couple articles out there that I think it just, it helps the citizens understand, you know, hey, this is, this is really a cost savings opportunity, we're really trying to, you know, decrease our expenses and have, you know, safe vehicles for our police officers, for example.
I would just say, I mean, if everything I'm looking at, and this looks like it's a savings to the city from a net perspective, after all the service fees and everything else that's associated with it, I mean, is, looks, I mean, looks, the proposition on paper looks positive. New vehicles are always, you know, better, everybody likes to drive in, you know, a new vehicle. I would think it would make our service center folks down there a lot happier, that, you know, the maintenance required on some of these vehicles, and you're right, I mean, if you own a vehicle, you know, I had a truck for like 10 years, I don't, I don't think I ever put brakes on it, or, you know, a lot of maintenance to it, because I didn't drive it that much. So that'd probably, you know, make that group down there happier, and, and I think that'd be good for the city. I think the, you know, my mind is, is, I think it comes down to kind of working through the contract and seeing what that looks like, and, and having Jeremy do his due diligence like he always does, and just kind of make sure that, you know, our eyes are wide open as we, as we, you know, potentially look at doing something like this.
Other comments? Greg?
I mean, not anything that hasn't been said, I would just, I would agree with what Michael said. If we're going to do this, I think it makes more sense to do the 10-year replacement versus the 70 upfront, it just, you know, make, just makes it a lot smoother, in my, in my opinion, easier on the, easier on the budget, and you can essentially take that, you know, the $122,000 difference from the 10-year to the six-year and roll it in to the next set of replacements, and make that a little, little more palatable.
Skip, Steve?
Go ahead.
No, I mean, I, I think, at the end of the day, I mean, you're looking at this, it's a, it's a savings to the city, you're getting newer vehicles that are safer and are easier to maintain. I mean, the bottom line, it sounds like it's a win-win-win, so, yeah, and other than, just like you said, as long as the legal aspect of it is, is the way it's supposed to be, Jeremy will cover that for us, I think it's a, it's a good idea.
I want to say one other thing, I, I did want to come back and acknowledge all the work that's been done to put this together. You know, I've done my previous life, you know, a bunch of analysis, and, and there's a lot of data that's got to get pulled. I know the staff did a, did a great job doing that, trying to pull maintenance records and a lot of other things to get us to this point. So I want to just recognize, you know, you, Michael, and Chris, and all the staff that worked so diligently on this, as, as you fed all the data to them to get us to where we are today, so.
Great. So basically, what I'm hearing is move forward and see what we come up with, and work the two contractual agreements, and bring it back to council at a later date?
Yeah, and I, and I think one of the things you said too, you know, trying to, you know, I don't know if, what else we could do to get more comfortable with what, you know, what is the right, is it 10 years, is it five years, is it six years? You know, because I, you indicated that that was something you were still not sure about, and I'm not sure what other information, you know, they could provide, or we need to look at to help us with that, or we just need to spend a little bit more time on it. But if there's more information that we need, obviously, I'm sure that Jennifer would be happy to provide it to us.
So just so you realize, we created the fleet fund a few years back, and the whole idea was to make sure that our fleet gets brought up to date and it's safe. We don't, we, we don't want somebody driving a vehicle that's not safe, and as old as some of these vehicles are, as many miles they have, they, they get overlooked and don't get replaced like they need to because of budget constraints. And what the, what I see this program possibly doing is, is locking us into a commitment to, to be good stewards of the, of the funds, but also ensure that our fleet is safe. And that, I think that's my biggest concern, is safety. And, and so we've been scratching along and doing the best we can with about a million dollars a year. This year, we cut it back substantially because we had some big pieces that we had to buy, and, and we're still going to have that need, but this address, what do you call it, the white fleet? The, the, the vehicles that they drive around, the smaller, everything one ton and smaller. So, you know, we get into those equipment trucks like the power company needs, or the lifting equipment for the sewer plant, the water plant, those, those kind of vehicles with that kind of gear add up, and, and we're going to have to budget the new trolley. We've got to do something about the trolley, you know, so. We've been saying that as long as I've been here, we've got to do something with the trolley. For nine years, we've been saying that. So Richard has about figured out every way to fix that trolley that he can, and keeps running out of options, so. Overall, this is, this is a, this is a partial fix for our total rolling stock. So, you know, we've got dump trucks that need to be replaced, and all kinds of back hose, and there's just heavy equipment out there that needs to be replaced, and we need to be budgeting for those as well. So what I'm trying to say is, don't think we're solving all of our problems by chasing this path. What we're doing is addressing the, the day-to-day lap vehicles that they're used for carrying out the day-to-day operations besides heavy equipment, so.
Chris, Cody's not here today from the airport, but having worked at the airport for eight years, all the vehicles that are, oh, are you back there? Oh, I'm sorry, Cody, I didn't see you. All the vehicles that the airport got over those eight years that I was there was, none of them are on this piece of paper, they're way, way longer.
Oh, yeah, they're, they are, and we need to look at that as well.
I know, terrible thing from a safety perspective, but when people would check a car out, I, I'd tell them, if any of the lights go out, bring it back, because there's something really wrong with it.
Y'all have any more questions? The staff, any, have any questions for Jennifer?
Oh, actually, I do.
Can you get to a microphone?
Yes.
Thanks.
Jennifer, Jennifer and I have spent a lot of time talking, even on Friday, going through the fees. All the fees are built into her analysis, but I'd like to look at them line item by line item, and some of the fees, that's what we have to do, our due diligence after talking to some of the cities. The feedback was positive, but some of them, I felt like they might have not asked all the questions to go into the list originally, so they did not understand that that might be a separate fee. For example, one of the fees is what Chris started asking is when they show up to pick up our vehicles. There is a fee associated with that, and there's also a transport fee that charges you per mile depending where the vehicle is taken to be sold, right? Yeah, so my comment on that is just for us to know, understand the fees, and of course, yeah. Jennifer, can I speak to that? Yes. But it's all built into the analysis, so all the fees are what you are seeing on a big picture here, yes. I am trying to wrap my head around the equity column, and that's where I was going to ask Jennifer about a little bit more, exactly what it shows one more time, because I have taken some numbers. Okay, if we sell on this analysis, what we are seeing right now, 39 cars, the first year, right, we would be selling 39, then the equity would be 188,000. So would that be, the equity would be for that 39 cars that we sell?
Great, yes, ma'am. So the, the reason it's 188,000 is the, all of those units are older than 10 years of age, and so as you see in the other two plans, they have considerably more equity, because we're selling the vehicles that are newer. So these are all 10 years or older. I was just looking at my pivot table here, have, I think it's 38% of the fleet is older than 10 years. So, yes, 39 right here, 41, oh, the, the two that we're downsizing, so, yeah.
Okay, so basically, if you look at that, you receive $188,000 for 39 vehicles, which is about 4,800 each. If you go to six years and over, you sell 70 vehicles, you receive 663,000, that would be 9,400 each. So that, that is the difference. And the following year, when you receive, like here, the 128,000 equity for eight vehicles, that would be like, we would be receiving 16,000 each. So the equity is only what we're going to receive for the cars that we sell, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And you and I can get, Grandular can show you, it's, it's on a per unit. So it's not averaging it out, it's, it really is based on, these are the vehicles we're going to sell, and this is what they're worth. So it just goes to show that those 30, and the difference between them all, replacing everything 10 years or older versus six years and older, those 30 vehicles are worth significantly more. Remember, you don't pay off on them. So they're all worth, you know, they're kind of at that optimal time.
We need to stand close to the microphone moving forward.
Sorry. Sorry, I was trying not to step on anyone. No, so, yes, that, that's absolutely right, and the, the 30 vehicles that were recommended, additional 30 vehicles, the difference between essentially Plan A and C, right, which is everything 10 years or older, or everything six years and older, those additional 30 are worth significantly more, because they're, we're essentially selling them at the optimum time, so that just, that-
So that just, that proves the, why it makes so much sense to sell vehicles at the right time.
So, Mr. Cuffin, you're, do you have what you need in terms of direction, conversation?
I think so. Staff, you feel like you understand what questions need answered? Right. Give a little microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. I know it was touched on, I just kind of wanted to expand on it, and to make sure that council agrees, or understands kind of the mindset staff has had over the years with vehicles. Like, for instance, I drive a three-quarter ton truck around, and now, really don't need that size of a truck, but it's, it was done, so it would be eventually, you know, handed down for a work truck, because it will eventually be pulling a trailer. From going with this program, we can identify exactly what each person needs, and not try to think about getting 10 or 15 years out of that truck, and the other uses that might come into play for that vehicle down the road, you know? And save money there in the initial purchase, and then, and the fuel savings. And then you brought up a good point about the airport, you know, they're using Tahos out there with the V8 engines, with wide tires, you know, not known for their gas mileage. Whereas, we could be using a mid-size or full-size sedan with a four-cylinder turbo engine. So there's that fuel savings. And then the other crews that drive around and are reading meters, you know, they wouldn't need, they wouldn't have hand-me-down trucks that are full-size trucks, they could have a mid-size or compact truck. So there's the initial savings in the purchase price, and the savings throughout the lifetime we have that vehicle in fuel. So I just, I know Jennifer touched on that, I just kind of wanted to, that's what I, that was the big, the big light that I saw, the further we got into this.
Yeah, that's a good explanation, I think. You know, when, when I worked out at the airport, people would say, what kind of airplane should I buy? And I said, well, what's the mission? You know, what are you going to do with it? And really, as we all buy automobiles, or whatever we decide to buy, is what's the mission? You know, I don't, it's my wife and I, and she wants a, you know, two-door convertible, and we don't need an Expedition any longer. So I guess that really makes a lot of sense, you're matching the vehicle up with the employee, and what is their role in the city, what's the need that they have with a vehicle, and not, you know, not putting a vehicle bigger, or, you know, something that they don't need that perhaps costs more. That makes sense. Thank you, Erin.
Sure.
Ms. Bertram, did you have anything that you wanted to close with?
No, just thank you for the consideration. I mean, I know that this is a big decision for the city, and, you know, for me, the most rewarding part of my job is seeing it implemented, you know, seeing the kind of before and after, seeing how it impacts staff, and then watching them go through several life cycles, and just, you know, for us to be able to come back year over year and present the results. And so I've been with Enterprise for 15 years, and 13 in this department. If, you know, there are any references that you need, I'll point you to a couple of my clients that I've worked with. But we just really appreciate the consideration, we'd love to work with you all, and if there are any other, you know, questions that do pop up between now and then, please don't hesitate to, you know, get them to us, we'd be happy to answer them, we'll work through, we'll get the smart attorney people on the phone to work through any contract changes that need to be done.
Thank you. We thank you for your time, and I'm glad that you opened the door there for more questions. I know this group, there will be more questions. So, thank you, it's very thorough. Chris, appreciate you, and staff, I know this did not happen overnight, and I know there's been a lot of conversation already. So thank you all for presenting this. It's, you know, it looks like an opportunity. We'll learn more, and we'll continue to talk.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, our attorney has one more.
Not for her, I know Bruce has often advocated for this, but since he's not here today, I'll go ahead and throw it out. We will need an attorney Porsche.
Yeah, well...
He says counsel Porsche.
Moving right along. Thank you, thank you very much for that. And staff, thank you guys and ladies for this as well. That, there is no action required on the, on that deliberation agenda. So I'm moving right to number seven, I understand there is an executive session requirement here, so we, for our discussion of matters permitted by the following actions of the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, and it is 551072, Deliberation Regarding Real Property. So with that, I am going to close this meeting, and we will go into executive session. All right. We're coming back in from executive session. All members are present, no action was taken. Before we close, oh, yes, we do, all members who were here in executive session are there. We still have Mr. Wadley and Mr. Rodriguez, who are excused for today's meeting. Are there any other discussions, any other action?
Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
I'd like to move to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for the purchase of the property known as Granbury Square Plaza.
Second.
Mr. Vale has made the motion. Mr. Oberdehr has seconded the motion, is there any discussion? If there is no further discussion, I call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, that is passed 4-0. Any other action needs to be taken? Nope? There's no other action taken, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, gentlemen.